All right, looks like we're ready to go. We'll bring the meeting to order. Want to welcome everybody to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. Today is November 19th, 2019. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Mr. Lark.
Here.
Okay, so has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes and read through the minutes? Are there any changes or revisions that we need? Do I hear a move to approve the minutes?
It's a move.
I'll second.
Commissioner Lark.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Mr. McGinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
I'm staying.
Commissioner Lavra. Yes. Chair Beck.
Yes. Okay, and we'll start off with Commissioner Lark. Do you have any reports this evening?
Nothing to report.
No report today, thank you.
No report?
Nothing.
No report?
No report.
And I too have no report. So at this time, we'll move along to staff comments.
Good evening, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. Your next meeting will be December 3rd. We will be talking about the Climate Action Plan, hopefully have the commission taking action that evening, and also talking about building heights as part of the rethink zoning process. That's it for us tonight.
Okay, so at this time, if there's anybody in the audience that has something that they'd like to say before Planning Commission that is not on the agenda, feel free to come forward. I haven't received any requests, but all right. Seeing no folks, we're going to go ahead and move along to item number one, which is rethink housing.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's been awhile since I've been here. Is it not?
There we go. Thank you. Good evening. Becky McCrery, Housing and Community Development Program Manager here for the city. Tonight, I'm here with a couple of great presenters, and we're going to be talking about housing. As you know, there's a nationwide housing crisis, both at the affordability level, low income level, as well as all the way up through the housing continuum. We see this issue most notably visible in our homeless population. Jurisdictions all over the country are taking a look at policies that relate to housing, around their regulations, around funding, incentives, things like that. So last year, the council directed staff to begin working on what we're calling a housing strategy, or rethink housing. So tonight, we're going to get you grounded in some information, first at the sort of the national level and county level, dial down a little bit about what that means to individual folks, and then I will wrap up with presenting Everett-specific data. So tonight, we have Mary Jane Braille Boyevich. Close? She is the Director of Human Services at Snohomish County, and she's been a staff liaison or a staff lead for the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force that Executive Dave Summers put together, which is a group of cities, elected officials from cities, taking a look at the housing issues at the county level. So with that, I will have her come up.
Okay. When it comes up. There it is. Thank you so much. I'm Mary Jane Braille Boyevich, MJ. It's a mouthful, I know, so most people just call me MJ. And I'm the Director of Human Services of course Snohomish County, and I've been working very closely with Executive Summers and the other municipalities and all the municipalities in Snohomish County on launching Housing Affordability Regional Task Force. The task force has really come together because we do have a housing crisis here in Snohomish County. We already have a housing crisis, and as you can see from this first chart, we are anticipating a tremendous amount of growth countywide. A lot of that will be here in the City of Everett over the next 20 years, where we'll be topping a million people in Snohomish County. So where you have people, you have a need for housing, and we're expecting that need to continue growing in this community. Currently, we have a tremendous challenge in that household median incomes are not rising anywhere near as cost as the average two-bedroom rent, and that again is affecting the City of Everett in particular, but it's an impact that we are seeing countywide, where the median incomes have only gone up 18%, while the average two-bedroom rent has gone up 50% in the county over the last 10 years. So that's very, actually, it's a little less than 10 years. So that's a very significant change, and it's having a tremendous impact on people in our community at all income levels. There are a number of things driving this that are macroeconomic conditions that we're going to need to take into account. First of all, this county is one of the areas of the country that has the highest loss, rate of loss of low-rent housing anywhere in the nation. So, and this was done in a study by Harvard University, where they define low-rent housing as housing units that where you pay less than $800 a month for the unit. So very, very rapid loss, and that happens through a variety of things. It happens through redevelopment, it happens through housing stock just aging out and not being available anymore, and it happens with developers redeveloping properties and raising costs, and it happens that developer or that owners sometimes just raise costs because they can. But when you have the incomes not growing as quickly as the cost of housing, losing what housing stock you have is like, you know, a very significant issue. It's also the case that the affordability of homeownership has been changing dramatically. So within the Puget Sound region, between 25 and 49% of the people who live here can't afford to be able to buy a home here in this community. So again, huge impact on the county. We've seen that there is a change in the number of households, housing units, and household, the number of households, and as you can see, particularly in the 2016 to 2018 timeframe, our growth in the number of households is rapidly outstripping the growth of units being created to build or housing units available to house those folks. And that is, that gap is growing at this point. And land prices have gone up substantially. Land has become, you know, we look out there and we see a lot of land, but a lot of that is not developable land, easy enough for me to say. And so the cost of land is going up. So the cost of land is going up, the cost of labor is going up, the cost of materials are going up, the availability of land is going down. All of these are pressures on the ability to build affordable housing. So what do we mean when we talk about affordability? You'll hear a lot of folks, particularly like when working with federal programs, talk about people who live at, say, below 50% of the area median income. And in fact, affordability or lack of affordability can exist at all income levels if you have a mismatch between what people can afford to buy and what is out there on the market. So broadly, the Housing Affordability Regional Task Force has looked at affordability is no matter what your income, if there isn't housing stock for you to buy out there where you can pay no more than 30% of your income for that housing, you've got an affordability crisis situation or a challenge facing you. There is, you can look at area median income for Snohomish County. It is currently $108,000. A cost burden household is one that is paying more than 30%, and a severely cost burden household is one that's paying more than 50% of their income on housing. The lower the income level, the more that means having to make really life-challenging choices. Do I take my child to the doctor, or do I pay my rent? Do I feed my family, or do I pay my utility bills? So particularly at the lower income levels, those are very significant challenges. The lower the housing cost, the lower the income folks have, the more that we need government intervention to fill the gap. It costs to build what it costs to build, and at this point, we cannot build housing without some form of subsidy for people up to about 80% of that average area median income, and particularly at the lower levels of that. So when we talk about the building of quote-unquote "affordable housing," a lot of times, people will be suggesting that that's housing that is affordable because somebody's not paying more than 30% of their rent. At the same time, if we can't build something where people can just pay the rent, we have to have something to fill the gap between what people can pay and what the housing stock costs. Really, rental homeownership begins at about 81% to 125% of the area median income, or which would take you between 88,000 and 135,000, and then above 125% or more than 135,000 a year, people can be presumed to be able to find something in the market that will meet their needs. Now, I know that sounds like a very, those are high incomes, but a lot of folks here, myself included, bought housing, been that at a time where it was much more affordably priced than now. So that is looking at current situations for someone trying to enter the housing market. There's a wide spectrum of housing, supportive housing, income-based rental assistance, rent-restricted rental housing, that is, you know, there in some communities where there are actually rent caps and rent controls put on how much can be rented. Market rental and homeownership opportunities, and as you can see, there can be different housing types at all of those different income levels. So as we talk about Snohomish County in, at large, there's 302,000 units. 65% of those are single-family detached, and as we have a shortage, an increasing shortage of land, that becomes a greater and greater challenge to be able to do that. Single-family attached, representing 30%, and mobile and manufactured homes, representing 5%. A lot of the mobile and manufactured home housing stock is aging out, and to the point, there's really nothing to replace it that is affordable. So it's not a huge percentage, but it's an absolutely critical percentage, particularly for people at the lower income levels. Here's what we're projecting. How many, how much housing is going to be needed? Currently, we have pent-up demand. We have nearly 91,000 units of housing that are needed, as you can see, across the income spectrum that for which we don't have units available. Based on the growth projections 2040, that's going to grow by another 36,000 units, and that is assuming that we don't continue to lose the existing low-rent housing stock that we already have. So a need countywide of 127,000 units by 2040 in order to house all the people here at all income levels. It is huge. It's a big, it's a big and heavy lift, which is why all the jurisdictions came together to say, what is it we can and want to do collectively now and over the next five years that we really can do to address this challenge? That doesn't mean that each jurisdiction won't have its own flavor, its own policies, its own ways of looking at things, but there's, there might be a core of activities that we can undertake collectively to help address a challenge of this scope and size. Boy, this is an ugly little chart. And Chris will dive much more deeply into this. What you're seeing now is basically the minimum wage in this county is $12 an hour. The average renter wage is $18 an hour. Two-bedroom, what you would need to make in order to be able to afford a two-bedroom house and not pay more than 30% of your income is 36,000. So that is a big gap in terms of what people are making at the lower levels, income levels, and what it costs to rent a place. So that is 3652 per hour. It's, a lot of people do not make that. And so you have people doubling up more, which has implications for cities and planning. People are making other kinds of choices, and as Becky pointed out, of course, we have a crisis of people being thrown into homelessness and certainly being unstably housed in the community. So this, of course, is available to you, and you can look at this in gory detail. You know, we sort of left it in because it's very data-rich, but it also tells the story of just what the gap can look like. And what does that mean in terms of who's struggling to own a house? Well, I mean, many of us want folks who are like our first responders and teachers to be able to live and work in the same community. If you look at this chart, it's basically showing that a lot of folks in a wide range of professions cannot afford to live here and not be cost-burdened. Now, of course, these are broad income groups, and they include, obviously, there's high-wage earners in there, and there's lower-wage earners in there, but this is on average, and I think it surprises a lot of people to see just who can't afford to rent or buy in our communities. So again, the cities and county came together to say, what are our priorities for the next five years? We need to collectively figure out how we're going to get more housing built in at all income levels, where people at all income levels can afford that housing, and then set a foundation for continued success. Very quickly, the group came up with what they thought is their five key goals. First, that we need more housing, more housing types, which means from single-family to what is often called missing middle, those, say, townhomes-type housing, to multifamily housing units, and greater affordability at all income levels. We need to stop the bleeding of existing affordable housing stock right now. We need to increase in density on transit corridors and in job centers. Something all of the jurisdictions were really very clear and adamant about is that we, we need a collective way to talk with residents about where we are and what we need to be able to accomplish in a way that people can, can relate to. I mean, I'm standing up here talking about 30% AMI, affordability being, that doesn't resonate. So what does resonate? That everyone's very clear, we need to have a way to talk about this. That does resonate with the voters in our jurisdictions. And continue to work together as a region. Again, that's not trying to put everybody in a cookie-cutter box, but just recognizing there are some things that we may all want to do, and we can do them better and more quickly together than if we each are going their own way. One of the things we hear fairly regularly from developers, and the developers who came in and talked to Hart, is like, every jurisdiction they go into is a new adventure in paradise in terms of how they do business in that jurisdiction. And so the extent to which we know each other's ways of working and can share that and articulate that and point people in the right direction, the better off we will be in terms of attracting developers who are building the housing stock we want and need in this community. So the Heart is having eight meetings. They've had seven meetings so far between May and January. They quickly decided with those goals, they wanted, they formed work groups to look at, and these work groups really included a wide array of invested partners around three key issues. How do we do outreach and community education? What are the policy and regulatory actions we might want to consider taking collectively? And what are the funding options available to this? Because as you saw, at 0 to 60, almost 0 to 80% of area median income, this can't be done without additional funding. Developers can't make a development pencil out at those income levels. And you'll be hearing more about that from some of our other speakers. So they are in the process of developing their five-year action plan. They haven't made final recommendations yet. They first identified what their key strategies were, then they sent this information to the work groups who developed, really worked very, very diligently to develop sort of an issue paper or white paper on each one of the things that they wanted to be looked at. And I actually came up with some things they thought, additional white papers that they thought they wanted the elected officials to consider. Those have come back to the elected officials. They've done a second balloting, and at an upcoming meeting, they'll be finalizing what they want in the action plan that is published, and that action plan is right now planned to be published in January. So this is still a work in progress, but it's getting closer to solidifying. Here are some of the agencies that participated in developing those white papers for each of the areas that the jurisdictions wanted to have looked at. And I mean, they started out with 100 and have been narrowing, narrowing down, because 100 is, 100 objectives is just spaghetti on the wall. It's not an action plan at that point. So you can see there's a large number of participants that have been involved in this and supporting the jurisdictions in this work. And they represent the range of housing providers as well. So some of the strategies originally, as I said, they started out with over 100 ideas. About 50 ideas were forwarded to the stakeholder work groups. There are some common themes. The stakeholder work groups produce those white papers. It's come back. I, I'm not sure where the final number will come down to, but in, in the action plan. But some of the key things that are being looked at, obviously, in the policy and regulatory, what can we do from a policy and regulatory's perspective to address more housing, preservation housing, and increasing density? Some of the sample strategies, these are not an exhaustive list by any stretch, but some of the ideas that the jurisdictions were coming up with, provide surplus public land for affordable housing, really looking at what every jurisdiction has in terms of surplus land, and how can that be, how can that be utilized. Zone for more housing and more housing type. So protect low-income communities from displacement in areas at risk of development, and I think this is really looking at what's been happening in some communities where transit lines have gone in, and there's a transit-oriented development, and it starts, am I taking too much time? How much time do I have?
A few more minutes?
Couple more minutes. Okay. And seeing that the areas get gentrified, so the people who are already living there can't stay there, and that is not anyone's intent. And some of the other things that the policy and regulatory work groups suggested the jurisdictions look at, again, increasing residential zoning density, promoting construction of lower-income housing. How do we go about doing that in, you know, oftentimes in mixed developments so that it's not, we're not creating concentrations of low-income housing, but really looking at mixed-income developments? Reduce housing construction costs. What can that be? There's a lot of information out there about things that increase costs that maybe don't need to, and some of that relates to how we regulate plan and permit, having anti-displacement strategies, and again, regional collaboration. The Funding Work Group said that we need funding strategies at all levels to support all goals. I think you all know about the House bill, the substitute House bill 1406, which is a 20-year obligation that the state is making to basically, sometimes it's called a rebate, sometimes, whatever it's called, that it's not a new tax, but that local jurisdictions get to keep some of the sales tax that is generated, and really looking at, do we have joint plans, or are we going to go all of our separate ways in terms of how do we implement that, and what is the best and highest use of that 20-year resource in order to create more funding? State funding for housing planning, and I know a number of jurisdictions have done that, and maximize resources such as the Ready Fund for Transit-Oriented Development. The Funding Work Group had said they also thought that the jurisdiction should look at a housing levy or other ways of raising additional resources, looking at contributing land, so it's not just dollars that might be contributed, and looking at establishing a housing growth fund funded by new construction. I think when you look at these from the work group, they will come out in a broader, less clearly-defined form than, by just saying that there are tools to be looked at in terms of increasing the funding available to do this work. Community education and outreach, some of the sample strategies that the jurisdictions picked on, is really creating a toolkit that all the jurisdictions can use, so that there's materials that can be just easily and readily customized for each jurisdiction to hand out, but they're telling the same story and developing a regional messaging plan. And again, looking at how do we ensure regional collaboration and tracking of our progress. I'd like to say that all of this is blueprinted. I think that the game plan is that once the key strategies have been identified, bringing back together work groups to then actually develop, okay, what are the actual steps we need to take to make any of these strategies a reality? If you want to see what all has been collected, what's happened in all the meetings, there's a website here for that, and if you have any questions or concerns, if you send an email to this address, it will be funneled and answered by the appropriate person. So a very fast cook's tour of what's going on in the Heart Group, what are the challenges they see in the work that all the jurisdictions are coming together to find out, what is our common, our common path forward, as well as distinct from our individual paths forward? So with that, I will turn it over to the next speaker.
MJ?
Yes.
Real quick, does anybody have any questions that they might like to ask MJ? And I, I know you guys are on a time thing, but that was a lot of information, really wonderful information, but does anybody have any questions they might want to ask?
Does the county have any plans? There's been a lot of discussion around the 30% threshold for costs of rents and utilities, but there's also a lot of conversation going around being done in academic communities about including cost of transportation in that calculation. Is that going to be factored into the conversation as well?
You know, it's a really interesting question. I know, like, I originally came from the workforce development arena, and a lot of times, you've got measures like AMI, measures of poverty, which are really very narrowly defined, and don't take into things like, do you have, do you have children under the age of five who need to go to daycare? Do you have additional transportation costs? And so right now, the tools that are out there being used do not do that, but there are tools that exist that can be used, like a self-sufficiency calculator developed by Wider Opportunities for Women, that does get at some of those additional costs, and what are, how do the cost of living really fluctuate depending on family composition and circumstance?
I was actually, if I may, just do a follow-up. So is that going to be kind of rooted or foundational in the conversation around how we talk about affordability? Because, you know, like, as somebody who is, based off the stats, they're definitely eligible to live in affordable housing.
Right.
And who make, who can't even afford a, who has a four-year degree and knows that 75% of my paycheck every month goes to rent, student loans, and just cars and utilities? You know, how are we carving out space for actual affordability conversations? Because my rent is a one number, but everything else that it takes to live in this community also adds up to a lot more.
I think it would be great to add that into the conversation, and that is certainly something we can promote back to the cities and the jurisdictions about how do we really get more refined? I mean, right now, the tools we're using are pretty blunt instruments, honestly, and there are instruments out there that would help us get at that more effectively. I will say that there's, you know, a lot of financial capability, training that has existed in the past and is being sort of reinstituted in the county, and a lot of that is built around those very budgeting issues. What does it cost you to live? What do you have? And then what do we need to do to help you build your financial capability, whether that's individual development accounts, savings plan, match savings plan, and things like that? What are the best kinds of institutions to bank with? What are institutions that could be problematic to bank with? So I think there's, there is a lot of room for more discussion around that in this discussion.
Yes. And just last, last thought. I mean, near the end, we did taper off towards issues around personal choices and personal responsibilities, and so I just want to put it in the notes that, you know, there are structural issues around a lot of other things, so this, you know, there is, there is space for the personal accountability conversation. What do you, what can you for? Where can you bank? But there are also structural issues that really make, that nullify that personal, that part of the component.
Absolutely true. And, you know, as somebody who comes from the human services and a background in economic and social justice, that's why I started with, let in with, what are the macroeconomic conditions that no one in this room actually has control over that we're actually trying to mitigate? We're, we're riding the tail of the dog. We're not driving it. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I guess I did have a couple of questions, and I don't want to take too much time. I'm having a hard time, this idea of the affordable housing, that term, as I think about it, it doesn't really mean anything to me. I can't wrap my head around what that even means. I mean, if I make a million dollars a year, affordable housing means one thing. I mean, it's something that everybody, it means something to everybody, but it doesn't mean anything to everybody, I guess.
Which is part of why this group is figuring, we've got to find a new way to talk about this. So, because I will tell you, after like five meetings, people were still saying, I don't understand what the term affordability means.
I'm not the only one.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
And it does look different at different income levels. There's no question about that. So part of what, one of the charges for people developing this outreach and communication toolkit is how do you describe that there's an issue of a mismatch of what you have in income and what it costs to live at all different income levels, and what does that mean that's different at different income levels? Because it is different.
But when you're talking about affordable housing, you mean housing that's pegged for one particular group that you've picked? You pick an, you find an AMI for that particular group, and within the confines of that group, it has to be a 30% income? Is that what you're talking about?
Basically, what, where the Heart landed was whatever your income Basically, what, where the HART landed was, whatever your income is, if you have to pay more than 30% of what you make for housing, you're paying too much of your income. So, you know, that AMI discussion becomes, it looks different at different income levels, but if you're having to pay more than, you know, if you make $100,000 a year and there's no housing you can afford to rent or purchase at that income level with, and not pay more than 30% of your payments in rent or mortgage, we've got an affordability problem at that income level. So, it really is tempting to not just look at one income level, but really look across the spectrum. What's available? What's the demand? And do we have enough housing?
I guess maybe it's not a housing issue, it's an economic issue. There's not enough jobs, there's not enough income issue. I mean, that's...
It is both. If you're not, you know, if you're not building the housing, you know, if you're not, you've got both that you're not building the housing and that people aren't making enough to afford the housing that is being built.
Well, I will continue to try to wrap my head around that because I can't quite get that. But the other question I wanted to ask is, I think some of the materials you're looking at, there is a link between a discussion about affordable housing, whatever that means, and homelessness. And I can certainly see there's some overlap between those, but I also can see that those are, in a lot of cases, apples and oranges.
Absolutely.
So, I'm just wondering, I guess that overlap was confusing to me as well, and even grouping those together in the same conversation without adding many additional layers of nuance to that.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, I guess, is the homelessness issue something that, I guess, HART is dealing with, or is that only to the narrow overlap?
HART is dealing with the whole spectrum of affordability. Homeless, people who are experiencing homelessness is one piece of that continuum. I know that a lot of times it's drawn a lot of the public attention and public policy. Certainly, it's an issue that's very central for me and the work that I do. I think where the overlap is, is that the greater a mismatch you have between what people make and what the availability of housing is, the greater likelihood is that there will be people who fall into homelessness. So, that's where the overlap is. But the affordable housing issue is much broader than the issue of homelessness, per se.
And I guess I would just say, as I'm hearing these things, that's another issue that, to me, it gets confusing and lost and...
Yeah.
Could probably use some, I don't know, refinement somehow or some separation.
And I think, we are so glad that there's going to be a workgroup looking at how do we, how do we really develop tools so people can communicate about this and not find it confusing? And it's also the case, there's no question, in this world of developing housing, there are terms that are used depending on which street corner you're standing on, and they're used differently and mean different things on different corners. We've got to figure out how we talk, how we find a common language that regardless of whatever, you know, if we're talking to HUD, we use this term, and if we're talking to state commerce, we use that term, if we're talking to low-income house tax credit people, use that term. What is the common term? We're going to use that people, that we can really effectively communicate with our constituents. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other folks? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, MJ. Next, I have Chris Collier. He's with the Alliance for Housing Affordability. That's a group of cities that have gotten together, that's been in existence since about 2011, to discuss different housing issues. Again, not quite what HART's doing, but more on a working level. Chris has been here before to present some data, and so he's going to maybe dial it down a little bit more to help us understand that affordability and how it affects individual households. Chris?
This is the same presentation? Uh-huh. Cool.
Oh, let me make one more comment. I meant to do this. So, you will see some similar data, and sometimes the numbers aren't exactly right, and that's because we're getting data from a number of different sources, but they're relatively the same. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, Becky, for the introduction. Again, my name is Chris Collier. I'm the program manager for the Alliance for Housing Affordability. You going to play nice? There we go. So, the alliance was formed in 2013 following a study by Snohomish County Tomorrow for the need for a shared forum and resource for all things related to housing and housing affordability. That service is provided to 12 cities, one town, one county, and one county housing authority through the lenses, the major work plan goals of data analysis, technical expertise, education, and outreach, and financial support. So, those are the four main work plan goals that I operate under. The first two are what this presentation is really going to focus on, and obviously the education and outreach is me standing here, talking at you. What the presentation entails is not new solutions. I think we know what the solutions are, speaking very broadly. That's bring the cost of a unit to own or to rent down to where people can afford it, supercharge your transit so that people can live further away from where they work, and just drive till you qualify actually pencils out, redistribute jobs and job centers like the Cascade Industrial Complex in Marysville. So, allowing, bringing the jobs to where people live, or catch income back up to cost, raise people's incomes somehow so that it's affordable, which is a can of worms. Just ask Seattle how the minimum wage increase worked out for them. All these solutions, and they're very nuanced and they're very detailed, intentionally speaking very broadly, all of these things have been studied in depth by the Puget Sound Regional Council, the Alliance, HART, the county nonprofits, newspapers, University of Washington, Ruckus House Center, the state legislature, and, 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 and. It's, a lot of research has gone into what the solutions are, what the tools are in the toolbox, and that's another discussion. What I'm here to talk about is the data behind the struggling households that you might meet on the street, you might read about in the newspaper, friends and family members, coworkers that you talk to. This is the why, this is the pond that all these people are swimming in, in housing affordability generally. So, getting right into the data, which is what I rather enjoy, this is housing and households and housing. This is how many households, new households have been created since the year 2000 to present, and then how many housing units have been built to house them from the state Office of Financial Management. So, if you start counting at zero, you have this black line on top, which is new housing units, you have the red line below it, which is new households being created. That's a household, not a person. The green bar is the annual, sorry, the blue bar is the yearly difference between them. The green bar is if you add that up year over year. That's the building surplus that you see as you continue through time. To 2005, stopping quickly, we have 1,724 more units built in Snohomish County than new households are established in the county, adding to a total surplus of 5,385, give or take. So, at this time, prices are basically flat because we're adding to a surplus, and Economics 101 Supply and Demand says that there's plenty of opportunity to shop, to shop around the market in housing, and so prices are flat. So, even though 2006, '07, we are running at a deficit yearly, we still have a surplus and prices are still not changing too much. Then we continue, we start eating away at that surplus, we still have it, still have it, the recession hits and things really slow down, 2014, 2015. And then something really interesting happens in 2015, where suddenly, in a way that we haven't seen in the last 20 years, how many new households are being created and how many new units we're building to house them suddenly diverge. And if you run this data back to 1990, for three decades, this has never happened. There's been one gap that's for one year that was similar in size, but that was just one year. And this gap has existed since 2014. And so, in 2014, in the following graphs, you're really going to see prices take off. And one thing I'll mention is that in 2007, prices were rising really dramatically, but in hindsight, that was a bubble. That was a speculative housing bubble. We had plenty of stock to go around, but prices rose anyway because people were speculating. That's not the case now, where we are, we are out of stock. No matter what year you start counting at, we have run out of houses for people to live in, in Snohomish County.
So, what happened in 2014? Why'd that turn?
We're victims of our economic success. People are moving here, as MJ illustrated, people are moving here from the Rust Belt, the Midwest, California, in search of economic opportunity. People are moving here. So, this isn't part of the presentation, but in 2011, Washington State received 11,000 new residents from other states in the country. In 2016, that number had risen to 53,000. 53,000. So, that's why. Why those people came here, I speculate that that's because of Amazon, Microsoft, and the economic recovery. Washington State has been one of the job growth leaders in the country for, year-on-year, for five, six years now. So, that's really where we're at, is that we are economically successful, and the rest of the country, the Midwest in particular, and the Rust Belt are looking at that, saying, I want a piece of that because that's where opportunity lies. That's where an opportunity for the American dream lies. The challenge is, we have a very small space we're trying to fit all those people into, but I'm getting a little ahead of myself. So, how many homes have sold? So, this is the number of homes that sold in Snohomish County that are single-family detached condominiums or townhomes from 2000 to 2019, up until about the end of August. What you'll note is that 2005, running up to the recession, you have a lot of homes selling because there was a lot of stock to go around, if you recall the previous slide. The crash happens, selling stops, as you would expect, but we never really recover from that. 2018 is the highest, the highest, or 2017, excuse me, is really as high as we get. 2018, we're falling. 2019, we continue to fall month over month relative to years past. And so, that's something that, to me, is really interesting because what that tells me is that people aren't moving. People aren't selling their homes, and they're not going to live somewhere else. If you had to sell your home today, if you have a home, where would you live? And I ask this question all across the county to all sorts of people, and they say, I wouldn't move anywhere because there's nowhere for me to live. It's too expensive for me to live, or the drive would be too far. Sure, I might be able to buy in Stanwood or Skagit County, but I don't want to make that commute. So, people are choosing not to sell their homes, and so our supply of homes that are turning over, to say nothing of homes, new homes that are being built, is constrained and shrinking. And this is something that I really want to point out to people, that that alarms me, that demand is astronomical, but our sales are declining. So, that means that prices are going to go up. Economics 101 wasn't a whole bunch of mumbo jumbo, just partially mumbo jumbo in college. This is every single city, the median sales price for a condo, single-family detached home or townhome in Alliance cities, excuse me, from 2000 to present. This isn't supposed to be something you can pick Everett out in. I'll have that on the next slide. What this shows is that we all started in different places, we're all at a different place, but we're all in the same, we're all in the same expensive boat. Our homes have risen on the same trend, our home prices have risen on the same trend line countywide. Granite Falls is the cheapest place to live in Snohomish County at $347,500, based on last date in 2019. So, that's as good as it gets, and 50, 60 homes are what have sold in Granite Falls in 2019. So, competition's pretty fierce. Get it while it's hot. If you prefer it in numbers, this is, this is the change in numbers in the last 10 years in median home sale price, again, for single-family detached condos and townhomes. So, that actually brings the number down if we include townhomes and condos. So, you see Everett, one of the lower increases at $84,000, along with Arlington, Granite Falls, and Marysville, based on home sale price change. I'm going to dig into this a little bit more in the following slides, about what this means in terms of affordability. So, if you want to get a home, first you need to qualify for the loan. So, it's not just about income and the sale price, it's about how much you need to make for the bank to consider you a worthwhile person to lend to. So, if you know the sale price of the home, which we do, and you provide the loan parameters, which I have, and in hindsight, this number, one of these numbers needs to be adjusted up a little bit, and I'll explain that in just a second, you can back into the required income for the loan. So, this is kind of playing bank, playing lender, and saying, okay, so here are the particulars of the household that's coming to you for a loan, and this is my comfort, the debt-to-income ratio is your comfort level with their risk as a lender, or someone that you loan to. So, now I can say, this is how much I want you to make to be considered a safe lender. So, interest rate, 4.2%, a 30-year loan, property taxes of $5,700 a month, or a year, excuse me, $900 a year of insurance, down payment of 10%. So, I hope, if you're a renter looking to buy for the first time you've been saving for your down payment, that helps bring the monthly cost down considerably. Non-housing, monthly debt, that's student loans, car payments, medical bills, things that you can go to collections for. And the debt-to-income ratio is a number that's pretty flexible and something that in hindsight, before I sent this presentation off, I wish I had updated to probably 30, 35%. But debt-to-income ratio really is a reflection of your financial stability. So, if you come out of college with wrecked credit, you've racked up a lot of credit card bills, you have a very bad credit score, your debt-to-income ratio is going to be closer to 25%. So, the lower the debt-to-income ratio is, the less comfortable the bank is lending to you. If you have excellent credit, you have your parents cosigning with you on the loan or something like that, so that their assets are something the bank can come after in case of a lien or foreclosure, that goes up to like 45, 50% debt-to-income ratio. So, that's a pretty flexible number. In any case, all of those numbers turn into this. This is what you need to make to qualify for a loan using those assumptions in each city. So, if you have sterling credit, you can get a home, you need about $82,000, $85,000 in the city of Everett to buy the median home. If you have really crummy credit, you're looking at $160,000 of required household income. That's all income, full stop. So, and again, presence of high student loans, bad credit, credit card debt, things like that will really go into this number. So, that's what you need to qualify, and let's look at who qualifies. This is single-income households based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics in 2018, and this is the median for all of the jobs that I'm going to present here. So, this is right in the middle. It's not new hires, it's not one day from retirement, this is right in the middle of your career. And this is for Kings, Snohomish, and Pierce County, which is their dataset. They don't get any more specific than that. A nurse and esthetist makes $184,000 a year, median. So, they can afford a loan anywhere in Snohomish County. The marketing manager, $152,000 a year, probably isn't looking at Mill Creek and Muckeltoe. Post-secondary health, that's the person that taught the nurse and esthetist in college. Computer programmers, they're not all, you know, driving Lamborghinis, working at Amazon. There are a lot of ramen-eating, you know, infrequently bathing computer programmers out there. And they're struggling to live in Linwood. You know, they're right on the line. Lawyers, that's, this is something that I really like to point out, that the average, so the mean for a lawyer is about $20,000, $25,000 higher than this number, because there are some real rock star lawyers out there that bring the average up, but the median takes into account there's a lot more public defenders out there that make absolutely nothing. So, lawyers are getting pretty slim. Computer network architects, hey mom, I'm going to be a computer network architect making over $100,000 a year. Great, I'll come visit you in Northeast County. Nurse practitioners, electrical engineers, administrative law judge, mom, I'm going to be a judge. Okay. Good luck. Maybe you should have, you know, become a doctor. Wait, what? You know, this is really where we're at for single incomes. So, and of course, people always ask, but what about dual-income households? Roommates, spouse, working spouse, things like that. Spouse is something that I really want to call out because I've had a lot of people asking about, but everyone comes out of college married, right? Well, not really. The rate of marriage is down, you know, year over year, and it's not explained by cohabitation with a partner that you're not married to. So, there's a little asterisk on that. But in any case, roommates or other cohabitation options that you can figure out are an option until children show up. They're loud, they smell funny, they don't really respect personal space and personal items. I have one, he's two. Is that the one? No, he's coming up. This will be him later, though, for next Halloween. They're not really popular with roommates. I mean, mine didn't go to sleep until 2:00 last night, so. So, they're expensive. That's him. He ate that whole loaf of bread. They eat you out of house and home. They really, you know, they're challenging. And not just some food and childcare. If you're both working, childcare is not part of the loan calculation that I presented before. $13,000 estimated for the average in the Seattle metro area for childcare. So, that's the average between infant care and just before preschool. So, if you have two infants, back-to-back, or God help you if you have twins, that childcare cost if you're both working is phenomenal, and that really does a number on your finances. The other part is, that's him again, my wife was wondering where to sleep that night. They make schedules challenging. They drape themselves all over your schedule, and you can't exactly make them shift. You really have to move your schedule for theirs. And so, when you have the punishing probationary police officer schedule, or, you know, you're working swing shift, or graveyard retail, things like that, having a kid can make it really complicated. It can make it really challenging. And the schedule for these kinds of jobs, although they, most of them pay well, sometimes, you know, other things get in the way. So, what I'm trying to say is that dual-income households is a solution for some people,[1738.98] So what I'm trying to say is that dual-income households is a solution for some people, but we can't hang our head on this being the solution for households. We can't just say, "Well, everyone should have a dual income, and then we can dust our hands to this issue." There's a lot more variety and complexity to this issue than that. So, but nevertheless, let's look at it just for fun. Say, electrical engineer and financial clerk, get married. Great, your combined income means you can buy anywhere. An RN and healthcare social worker, combined income of $156,000 a year. Firefighter and a middle school teacher. A firefighter individually, I just looked at that this morning, is $83,000 a year median income. And this is something that I'd encourage every city to look at for their fire departments and their police forces. That's a great measure and a metric of affordability if they can live in your city. Author and a social services, services manager, I'll whip through these without reading them all. Machinist and pre-K, maintenance worker and administrative assistant, nursing assistant, radiology tech, and, and, and. And so there's 730 plus or minus jobs that the Bureau tracks, and there's a lot of combinations, a lot of pairings, for whatever reason, a house, a household is dual income, that doesn't add up to this and might not even add up to rent. Speaking of rent, this is what the rental picture looks like in Snohomish County. All of this is adjusted for inflation, by the way. I should flag that. Inflation-adjusted rent for a 3-2-1 and studio apartment, this is a Snohomish County average. It ends in 2017 when Dupree and Scott closed up shop rather abruptly and unhelpfully. I spot-checked on Zillow for their county averages, so that's a separate dataset, I set it aside for continuity purposes, but you can see how much they think rent has increased from 2000 to, 2017 to 2019. And so looking at the major job categories, let's see who can afford rent. So protective service, that's your police and sheriff's officers, that's also security guards, firefighters, it's a lot of different sub-jobs inside that. So there's a lot of people working in protective service. Education, everything from K through post-secondary college, library professions, office and administrative support, you know who that is, and healthcare support. That's not the doctor, that's the people keeping the hospital running on the night shift. So studio, right off the top, about half of protective service can afford a studio in Snohomish County. And remember, this is the median for all, the tri-county region. So incomes are a lot higher in King County. And if you're not making it in King County, you're trying to look in Snohomish or Pierce. So that's what, that's economic displacement, and people coming up from King County that we're talking about. The one-bed, you see office and admin support dropped by almost 10%. Same with education, two-bed, and a three-bed. And no one would really expect a three-bed, you to be able to afford a three-bed on a single income. So you might have a roommate in that circumstance, but again, choose well. And finally, this is how many people worked in these jobs in 2018. So between Kings, Snohomish, and Pierce County, only 20% of that 264,000-person workforce in office and admin support can afford a studio on their own. The rest of them are, I don't know, I don't know what they're doing, but they're really challenged. And they're working full-time, sometimes more than full-time. And so that's really what we're dealing with. It's not the stereotypical, you know, someone that's using, someone that's come out of, you know, safe and sober housing or what have you. It's, it's people that are working full-time, really, really hard, but there's just not enough places for them, for people to live, and so competition, economics 101, makes prices go up. So to recap, these numbers are just broadly illustrative of the situation. Like I said earlier, this is the big pond that everyone's swimming in. These numbers are lower because they included condos and townhomes, so I could make it worse by just doing single-family. And they validate the experiences of real people, a growing number of which you can't own, and so they rent out of necessity. And I want to back up and say, real people that I've talked to, like, and with his permission, I'm using this example, the parks director of the city of Linwood. His wife provides full-time, weekly child support for his daughter and son-in-law because they both work and they cannot afford childcare and own a home at the same time. So that's out of necessity, grandma is providing full-week child support, childcare, I should say, not child support. Wrong word. There's that. There's also the grandmother that I met, who, in a park in Linwood, who drove over the mountains, or drives over the mountains from Wenatchee every single week to provide childcare for her grandkids. Again, out of financial necessity, because her kids, she explained it to me, her kids' childcare bill, or no, their rent went up by $200 that month, and they couldn't afford childcare anymore, and so they had to find other options. So people are making it work, but they're really struggling. So all of this means rents are rising in response to market forces, scarce supply, rising demand, again, economics 101. So dual-income households are an option, but not a solution, and that this isn't just working-age households. This is also senior households on a fixed income. Social Security colas do not keep up with rent. So why isn't there more action on this? Why don't, why aren't people storming Bastille demanding that something be done? And I think this is part of the reason why, because the loan payment in 2000 for the median home in Snohomish County was $1,300 a month. Contrast that with 2019, where it's risen by over 60, almost 60%. And so if you bought in 2000, you locked in what is effectively your rent, sorry, 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, 45 years ago, and this hasn't touched you except for property tax increases, except for what you read on the news, or if you have kids and they're trying to, trying to live somewhere, they will probably complain to you about it. But it's, it's something that, generally speaking, homeowners that bought a long time ago, like MJ mentioned in her presentation, haven't really felt. And so really, addressing this issue to get yourself to the political latitude and capital to actually do something about this, it's really about reaching those homeowners that don't feel this, and making them understand, this is what future generations are going to deal with, this is what your kids are going to deal with, and this is what the economy of the region is really grappling with when your service sector can't live anywhere close to where they work. And now, that's including emergencies, emergency services. So while we're waiting for action to happen, and this is my last slide, I promise, healthcare is being affected because there's no safe place to discharge hospital patients. I talked to the Verdant Health Commissioner, Robin Fenn, before she departed, and she recounted to me that there are hospitals with people staying in those hospitals for 400 days because the hospital has no safe place to discharge those people to after they've met, after their immediate health, excuse me, after their immediate health need has been met. So you go in for a health issue, hospital fixes it, but you have no home to go to, the hospital can't legally kick you out. So they stay in a hospital bed that Medicare says, "Well, I'm not covering it because their immediate health need has been met," but the hospital has to keep them, and so it becomes expensive, expensive childcare, or not, charity care. The two-year-old kept me up very late last night. You have frequent flyers at the ER due to unaddressed health needs, people that are foregoing their diabetes medication, they're selling their opiate medication, their pain medication to make rent, or other health complications that they're foregoing because they're trying to save money. Repeat petty criminal offenses, people that are, repeat petty criminal offenses like criminal trespass. This is from the Veterans Administration. I asked them specifically, "Give me an example," and this is one that they have in their own experience with their clients that the VA serves. You go into jail, you come out, you have nowhere to go, and you get another criminal trespass. You go back to jail, you have a criminal record that's one more instance long, and it's that much harder to get back on your feet. Jail doubling is treatment. That one I don't think I really need to dig into too much. And if you do have a place to live, it's more time on the road and less time with your family, and all of the challenges that that brings. And finally, is the growing need for emergency intervention. It's rent control, which you see Oregon doing, which is a can of worms upon a can of worms. I mean, that is a huge challenge, and that's really, that is a true emergency intervention in this situation that I would really encourage folks to not consider. Pull every lever that you can before you get to rent control, because that's a really sticky issue to get yourself into. The housing levy, which the workgroups in Hart went on and on and on about, complained to the cities about endlessly, that that's, that's the emergency intervention that we're at now, which the workgroups acknowledge, I was on the workgroups, is politically unpalatable to be gentle. But that's where we're at now, is that's the emergency intervention that's necessary to try and keep a bandage on this gushing wound. And it also takes shape in the 10-year waitlist for Section 8 vouchers out of the Housing Authority. And it's not just a 10-year waitlist, the waitlist is closed. The people that got on the waitlist are waiting for 10 years or longer. 30 people got pulled off of a over 1,000-person waitlist in 2018 due to just turnover and people leaving the program. So that's how fast the Housing Authority is going through its Section 8 voucher list. So really, we're on a Newton's Cradle, and it's only going in one direction. The market-rate housing is not being built, and people are downgrading one step at a time, just like a Newton's Cradle, and people are starting to fall off the end. So that's, that's what we're experiencing as we wait for action to happen. And if this is all very depressing, you can take an emergency kitten for the road. So I'll stay here until you're done with questions.
Wow.
I'm great parties.
Any questions?
I guess maybe I'll, question observation, I guess, I'm still not sure where, it's a housing issue or just a general economic issue. I mean, why, I guess, is, can, is it possible to tell? I mean, is it just that we have, we have such a divided society, we've got people who can't make it in the Midwest, who come out here to the booming economy, it's, it's the difference between the haves and have-nots. We've got the have-nots coming over here and flooding and creating this economic issue that isn't necessarily related to housing, it's having impacts on housing, or is it the other way around?
I think, I mean, yes. It's, it is people that are moving in from the Midwest, but it's also an issue of production. It's an issue of, so there's four components, all of them start with hell. There's labor, there's the presence of labor, the ability to build things as demand is to meet demand. There is lumber, the price of materials. There is lending, the liquidity of capital, and then there's land. And land is really where I take, I take particular aim at, because over 70% of Snohomish County's residential land area is exclusively reserved for a single-family detached home. So that's, that's really the deal. Seattle, I don't think anyone's here from Seattle, throw them under the bus, 80% of Seattle's residential land area is owned exclusively for single-family homes. And that's really where we're at, is we have built all the single-family homes we can, and so now people are trying to squeeze into the cracks wherever they can find space. And so as people come from the Midwest, that's the circumstance that they run into, and by their mere presence exacerbates.
Do you think you can address on a, on a, on a local, regional level? Because there's, I imagine there's lots of empty space in the Midwest where the people came from, what if we built the housing there and made it attractive, possible for people to stay there?
Yes. In other, in other presentations, and I've talked about that, really, this is a three-legged problem. It's, at the national level, you need congressional action to reinvest in the Midwest so that it's economically advantageous to stay there, so that people aren't leaving the Midwest and the Rust Belt to seek economic opportunity. That's outside my scope, our scope, but it's a very necessary component of this issue, because you can build housing until the cows come home, but if people keep coming, you know, maybe you'll never run out of an issue. So that is, in fact, one part of it. But failing that, we're trying to take the sting off of this problem while we wait for national action to happen. And also, you know, I think the trend is, if you look back at sale prices, the desire to grow the region is there. You see that pre-recession, even though it was pretty speculative, you did have a lot of people moving here. And so I think this is, this is a trend that we're going to be on for a long time, for a lot of reasons, and so it's something that we do have to plan for. You know, the Pugilist Regional Council's predicting 1.8 million more people coming here by 2050 in the next 30 years. You know, that's, that's what we have to deal with, while we wait for Congress to try and, you know, pull out the Marshall Plan 2.0 for the Midwest, so. But it's, it's something that every level has to address. It's not just up to cities, it's not just up to the county and the state, it's also up to Congress, too. But I wouldn't hold your breath.
Chris, I look at this slide here that's not numbered.
Sorry.
That's fine. And so why the disconnect between the demand and the units that are being built on the market today? Continued disconnect, I would say.
So why, why is the?
Why aren't they being, why aren't they being developed to meet the outstanding demands there?
There's just not a whole lot of buildable land left. I mean, this is something where a lot of cities tell me, "Well, gosh, we'd love to do something, but we're built out."
But these are all units, these are condos and townhouses as well, correct?
Yeah.
So there's a variety of housing types in this graph.
That's correct.
It strikes me that, that maybe the cost of developing those units do not merit the ultimate, right?
Yeah.
And so then I see on Slide 20 of the first presentation, housing growth unfunded by new construction. Isn't that just adding to the cost structure?
Yeah. I mean, that's something, that's something that personally, you know, I think that there's, that growth, that cost tends to be passed on to the end buyer. I think really, I mean, and this is speaking for really myself, is I think the overall solution really lies with the issue of land use and what you allow to go on your land. The issue that we have 70% of residential land area restricted to single-family detached housing, that when you have multifamily zoning, in some cases, it's limited, it's height-limited at 25 feet. You know, things like that where we're artificially constraining what the market would otherwise want to provide. So that's a short answer.
And not trying to skip ahead here, but I think that, I agree with you, and I think what we need to do here is think about how we make our land use more efficient. And that may mean some level of displacement, because we have single-family homes in areas that should support a greater density. But it seems to me that the answer is simply more units, whether they're single-family or attached.
And I think, to put a, put a bow on that real quick, is the idea of choice. Having a variety of choices to, places to live for each life stage in each city. So a place to live if you are fresh out of college, a place to live when you have a kid, two kids, a place to live when you would like to downsize, when the kids have moved out, you want a smaller place, you don't want to maintain a yard. And that, I think, is what's lacking in a lot of places, is that we don't have that variety of choice in housing to meet that need.
Yes, for a while, and it may still be the case, the condo construction market was sort of broken in Washington. Is there any progress on, on breaking it?
There was a bill passed with, condo liability reform did pass in the last session, if I recall correctly. I don't know enough about it to say how conclusive that was, whether it's something that they'll have to take another run at, but I know there was progress on that.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up and ask a couple of quick questions around cost, just so I can check my understanding. I mean, so we see that most of the land is zoned R1, single-family detached homes, 70% here in Everett, meaning 30% has to accommodate all the commercial, all the, as well as all the multifamily, which means you have to go really high, right, to accommodate growth?
Not necessarily. I mean, so density can be achieved in, say, a duplex. You know, that's, that's something that the City of Seattle Planning Commission really succinctly put a cap on that by, by taking a diagram of a house and showing different ways you could divide that house where the footprint's the same, but you have more people living there.
So instead of like building up and paying expensive concrete building of costs, you can start, you know, pushing out density into other places through duplexes, which are stick-frame construction, much more affordable, and brings down that upfront cost, that cost concern that Commissioner Finch was discussing.
I would contend, why not both simultaneously, but yeah.
Fantastic, yeah, why not both? So that's, I just want to make sure I was understanding that correctly. So yeah, no, thank you very much.
And a great example of that is City of Minneapolis, they, and now Oregon, actually, they passed a, Minneapolis passed a ordinance saying that in all their single-family zones, you can build up to a triplex on the zone, or the homeowner can choose to divide the home into a triplex. So is that accurate, or? I just didn't want to see you recoiling from your chair and like, oh, what's he saying now? Oh, nuts! So that's something that I would point to, is Minneapolis 2040 is kind of the first big leap in doing something in single-family zoning.
Any other questions?
Lots of questions, I won't take any more time.
I have a more esoteric one. So if you have, so if you're, if you're generating value only through constraint of the market, does that inhibit wealth creation in the community overall? Kind of the same way a cartel would? Or the same way like De Beers constrains diamonds? Does that makes, is that?
I think I'm following, yeah. I mean, so I think the, a quote that I would respond to that with is from a New York Fed economist, who pointed out that owners, current owners of single-family homes don't want to see more housing get built, or more even affordable housing get built, because that inherently will lower the value of their asset, which increasingly, in the American economy, the home is your greatest asset, your greatest financial asset. And so more homes mean that your asset either does not increase in value as fast, or it loses value. And that's something that the community, right now, of homeowners, which is 60, 66% most, in most cases in Snohomish County, doesn't want to see happen, because either consciously or unconsciously, because that's a real challenge, so.
Have there been, like, have other communities, I mean, for a lot of people, their retirement's built into their home, this is how they will provide financial security. They need this home to get by. What have other communities done, or have communities tinkered with policies to like help, you know, make sure that asset still is protected, or created insurance for that? Like what, do you, has there been examples other where, other places of people smarter than me coming up with ways to fix this?
I can't think of any off the top of my head, except that the Housing Authority had a small home repair loan program that they terminated with cause many years ago because that loan program, in essence, was keeping people in their homes that shouldn't that loan program in essence was keeping people in their homes that shouldn't be in their homes anymore. They were loaning out ninety thousand dollars in some cases to homeowners to do major structural repairs in their homes. And the Housing Authority was looking at that and said, well, that doesn't make any sense when you could take that ninety thousand dollars and go, get it a lot further in other means, either in renovation or new construction or rental subsidy. So that's the only thing I can think of off the top of my head, but I'd have to look deeper to really answer that.
Can I ask something? So I'm seeing this, this graph you got up here, and it's inverted at the end, and that is contrary to everything that you would see in Economics one oh one. When demand, supply will usually meet demand. So there is a, this is not a natural, in the natural world, that it would equal, it would, it would reach an equilibrium. So there is something preventing that from reaching that equilibrium. Is it really just something that, is the impediment that the zoning and the government regulation? There's got to be something else going, or, or, or I guess maybe there doesn't have to be. Is that, is it possible, identify that as the impediment?
In my research, so reading papers of economists that are much, much, much smarter than I am, that is the thing that often, most often gets pointed out. There's a lot of things that go into it. There's also the presence of King County, where it's much more profitable to build in King County. And so you see a lot of the builders that survived the recession building in King County and not coming up to Snohomish County. So it's harder to get construction up here. We compete with the King County labor market. So that's a component. But I would say the major component of why this graph is inverted is because of in, to summarize, government intervention through land use and, you know, land use policy, that's, that's zoning. That's not permitting and impact fees and things like that. That's like big picture government intervention in the form of you can build this here and that there, and never the two shall meet.
But every city does that.
Yeah.
Every city in the world does that, don't they?
Mm-hmm. They did, well, after nineteen thirty-seven.
It doesn't always inhibit...
So, so this is, this is a big conversation, but the Euclid, the Euclid decision in the Supreme Court back in the nineteen thirties is really where land use and zoning started. And that's, you know, so it has been something that has been the cultural norm for a long, long time, but it's something that we might be reaching kind of the logical conclusion of as we try to squeeze more people into this, into this small area, so. But it's a big discussion. I don't want to keep everyone waiting.
Well, then it would seem to me the solution would be simple. This is not a difficult problem to solve, if that's the issue.
Just build more houses.
Well, just change our zoning and allow everybody to build up and get rid of single-family zones, and we can solve this problem.
Sounds like I've made work for Becky and Alan.
I mean, I guess, I guess, I don't know. I mean, I don't, politically, it's wrong. We've seen that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's difficult politically, but...
I can't disagree with you.
I want to add one thing to that, though. I mean, economic development strategies also play a factor. This is, that certainly is all a big factor in this, but it's not the only one. Do we have high-road economic development strategies that are creating job opportunities with living wage jobs for everybody? And that's not just stealing from the neighbors down the road, which is kind of a zero-sum game, but looking at those economic development strategies because the gap between what people make and what it costs to build a house is growing. And there's a lot of evidence that shows that it's continuing to grow. So you've got both things going on here, and I think that's why, you know, you've got a group looking at, we need to look at the issues much more broadly, and they are interconnected. You could, you could try to tease them apart, but they are interconnected, so.
Is it, is it the cost to build, or is it just that it's not profit, that it's, that the opportunity for a builder, it's, they can, they can make more money somewhere else, so they're just not willing to accept a lesser profit for the same effort?
Do you want to ask that, Alex, or...
Oh, no, I had a question.
Okay. That's some, that, yes. That's, that's something that you could write a PhD thesis on, but it's, there's a lot that goes into it, so.
Also a PhD thesis-related question. I mean...
I get two? Yes.
I know, right? Two, back to back. Would you say that it's, I mean, maybe, I don't know if this answers right now, but do you think over like the last, the course of two hundred years, through our development patterns of this country, how we acquired land, how we treat our environment, would you say that artificially may have artificially deflated the cost of housing?
Inflated?
Deflated, made it easier to build and pass on costs. Whereas building responsibly, building sustainably, building in ways that respects dignity of people who live in the communities, achieving those standards actually makes it far more difficult to, to generate profit. Is this like, is this a beyond-the-scope structural issue with how we deal with housing? Is it possible to enact, in fact, make a profit on all housing and still meet bare minimum standards that, you know, that we've started to kind of realize over time? Greens, green housing, housing that respects the dignity of a family? I don't know. Has there been any conversation around that in your readings?
That is a PhD thesis question. You know, people are discussing and thinking about that, and that's something that, you know, I'd be happy to dig into more. But you are onto something there, I think, but there's, to answer conclusively, it would require a lot more work.
Thus the point of the task force.
Yep.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I'll stay until you're done. Don't worry. Becky might get the hook.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, now I'm gonna just provide some Everett-specific data on sort of our housing condition and where the city's going with the Rethink Housing Project. You're Maybach, didn't you?
It's a dance with a lot of passion. I'm gonna use animation to yell, I promise.
Yikes. There we go. I forgot to retitle this slide. We originally called the housing strategy, we were going to call it Housing Everett, but with the Rethink Zoning Project, we thought naming it Rethink Housing, which we have our new graphic here, would make more sense and the public could see that these are related topics that we're going through at the same time. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of background. You might have seen some of this. It's, it's been in the comprehensive plan, and then recently, we've been going through mining more data updated from different sources. But as you're aware, right now, the 2035 growth projection for the City of Everett is fifty-five thousand additional people. That means almost thirty thousand more housing units just for the City of Everett. And then just a little bit about some of the changing demographics that we have. You can see that the population is aging, so we're seeing kind of the most increase in the fifty to sixty-nine-year-olds. So people are aging and retiring. And then in terms of the city's housing stock, forty-four percent of the units are in multifamily. So that means there's three or more units. And then there are fifty-six percent in single-family residential. I should mention that two-thirds of the housing stock here was built before nineteen ninety. So Chris mentioned the, the single-family home repair program that they had. The city operates CHIP, if you know what CHIP is, Community Housing Improvement Program. That's been around since nineteen seventy-seven, and we do provide low-interest loans for low-income homeowners, and we go out and make repairs so folks can stay in their homes because we have an aging housing stock. So forty-four percent of our, our households are homeowners, where fifty-six percent are renters. So we just did a little bit of a comparison there in terms of the household composition, comparing ourselves to Snohomish County excluding Everett. So you can see that the, that the non-family household is larger in the City of Everett than it is in the county. So we almost have a reverse household composition. And then we're taking a look at those income levels again, and this is the fifty-five-thousand folks' households. So this is what we would need in these different household incomes. So for below the fifty percent of household area median family income, another statistic, it's over, just over nine thousand for that group. For the fifty to eighty percent, which is still considered some low income, is about thirty-five hundred. And then again, just for folks making over the eighty percent, is almost ten thousand households. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about homelessness because this, the city's been putting a lot of effort into the homelessness response that we have. Historically, over the last several years, there's been about a hundred and fifty homeless individuals annually in Everett. As you might remember, from the Community Streets Initiative, in twenty fourteen, there was a number of programs and initiatives that were recommended. And where that crosses over with the housing is that in order to eliminate homelessness in Everett, obviously, you have to have housing. But the other thing is for those chronically homeless, they need that supportive housing, which is a very high-service type of housing and very expensive. But you need that type of housing also to help eliminate homelessness in your community. I'm not going to go through this because that was statistics that we already saw earlier, just about the affordability levels of our housing. And then this is Everett-specific in terms of the housing production that we've had over since nineteen ninety-nine. So you can see there, early in two thousand, there was a spike, and then again in two thousand and six, I believe that was the Riverfront Development in two thousand and six?
No, downtown.
Downtown, yeah, the downtown. And then in two thousand and eight, the, the economic downturn. And then in two thousand and sixteen, we saw some, a significant in, housing production, and that was Riverfront. So I know they just got an updated development agreement, so I think we'll see another somewhat of a spike here in the next couple of years with the housing. So the mayor issued her vision under different city priorities, and one of those priorities, obviously, was for housing. And I wanted to share this with you in case you haven't seen it yet, but our goal is to help create an environment where we have a wide range of quality housing available at all price, price points. People who work in Everett also have the opportunity to live in Everett. So here's where we're going to be taking a look at our policies, our city policies, not just land use, but any policies that might affect housing, our resources, and make sure that they're aligned. And also important is trying to address the homelessness in both temporary and permanent housing options. This is kind of a funny slide, but I, we have several efforts going on that are, right now, that are related to housing. We're getting ready for our 2023 comprehensive plan update that will include housing policies, land use policies, and our consolidated plan, which is our plan for how we spend our federal dollars, our community development block grant dollars. We are also going through that, update of that right now, too. There are a lot of housing components to that. The new community development division, which I'm part of now, looking at our priorities and, and what we're doing and how we affect housing, because obviously, government doesn't build housing. We're also going through our annual action plan, where we just established priorities for our federal funding. And as you might imagine, housing was very high on the priority list, so we will be looking to fund programs and projects that are related to housing. And then you have been involved in the Rethink Zoning. That's also occurring right now. That's moving along in parallel with the Rethink Housing. We'll be doing some joint outreach efforts here coming up the first part of the year. So just a little bit about our comprehensive or consolidated plan update. As I mentioned, we went out to the public and did several engagements to find out what the public thought our priorities should be. Affordable housing, homeless services, and then community-wide sidewalks and parks. And again, the Rethink Zoning, which is, we're continuing to do public outreach and asking folks about their opinion of the variety of housing choices. We held a workshop with housing developers. We just wanted to get from them, you know, what they thought was our biggest issue. So we asked them what they thought the housing needs were in, in Everett, and we did this little word collage. So every time somebody used the same word, the word would grow larger. So these are the things that they thought and were true about our housing needs in And then we asked them, given the mayor's guidance, what would it take for you to come and build housing in Everett? So as you can see, the biggest word there is flexibility, and then obviously incentives, dollars. You see levy on there, too, but, and just looking at priorities. Embracing innovation, that's something that we'll take a look at, too, some of the alternative construction methods that are being used now to provide housing at lower costs. But Everett's doing a lot, surprisingly. So as we have been involved in heart, and some of the recommendations that have come out of, or that are going to be coming out of heart, is actually things that Everett has been doing. So this is really a long list, but things where we have placed some high-density zonings in Everett Metro, in, along the Evergreen Way Corridor, the Broadway Mixed Use. In Metro specifically, there's density bonus incentives for affordable housing. We do participate in the interjurisdictional collaboration, that is the Alliance for Housing Affordability. And just on the, on the funding or cost side, we offer the multifamily tax exemption for multifamily projects in certain areas of the city. We do have development impact fee reductions, so those are available to those folks that build in housing at the lower income levels. So what we do with those is we place a covenant on them, so they make sure that they maintain that affordability in exchange for reduction of their impact fees. A couple of years ago, the, the City Council passed a reduction for special connection charges, so that's connection to water and sewer, which can be pretty pricey. For Claire's Place, that supportive housing project that was just built, that was in the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range. So as long as they maintain that use and serve that specific population, then they won't have to pay those fees. In terms of historic preservation, there is also a special valuation tax incentive. And then, excuse me. We have federal grant opportunities for affordable housing only. This is some of the next steps that we'll be doing. We're going to be out doing some validation with our industry experts on some of the things that we've heard, engage with committees in the City Council. We're going through and analyzing potential strategies, current policies, and then we will present some findings and recommendations to the community and the council for them to consider. This is the timeline that we're working with, just keeping it moving along. So we think spring, winter, spring is when, really, this will be back out in front of the, the council. And our graphic.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Becky?
I want to leave with a comment. I do like the graphic a lot. I like how it ties in with the Rethink Zoning. My follow-up question is, you mentioned, like, somewhat specifically, that the government will not build housing.
I said that government typically doesn't build housing.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure. I was just kind of curious, because it seems like we have a mismatch in like, you know, what developers are interested in doing and the need that exists right now, as pointed out by Mr. Nannasak, you know, that, you know, so why doesn't somebody step in? And so I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a policy absolute.
No, that's just typical. For Claire's Place, I don't know if everybody knows, but the city did surplus property and gave that to them again, as long as they continue that use and serve that population, they got that property in exchange.
Any other questions? Okay.
Well, thank you. We look forward to being back in front of you.
We look forward to having you. That was well done. Thank you to all three of you for coming. Do you have any last comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
Sure.
I didn't receive any public comments, but would anybody like to come and speak on this particular issue? Come forward and state your name and your address, please.
My full address? My name is Brian Partington. I live at four nine zero A Rucker Avenue in Glacier View. I'm also been, our neighborhood is starting up its neighborhood council, so I've been involved in sort of getting that started again, as it's been dormant for, I think, seven year, what, four, six years. And at our most recent meeting, we were talking a little bit about... And at our most recent meeting, we were talking a little bit about how to make our neighborhood better and some of the structural impediments to doing so. Our neighborhood hasn't had a park forever. We're just getting one now with the new YMCA development and some of that land being put aside for the city to build a park. We don't have any kind of local social gathering place. All of the development in our neighborhood is along the periphery, facing out to the, on the main arterials. It's not for the neighborhood. And in terms of, like, the political issues with getting people to embrace changes in zoning, I think that there's some zones here that are, some areas in the city that have been zoned single-family that have some glaring mistakes in the zoning that impact the current residents in those zones. So like, when my family moved to Everett about two years ago, and when we did so, we, because my wife works downtown, we tried to make sure that we were as close to transit as possible. It was almost impossible to find rental property that was close to transit, which seems crazy, but it's true, right? Like, it was very difficult to make that work. So I think there's room for changes. And when I was talking to some people at our neighborhood meeting about creating these kind of like vital community spaces that don't exist, perhaps because the density doesn't support economically, like having a local coffee shop. There's just not enough people around to make that economically viable. And yet, that's something that the neighborhood almost needs, because people need a space to kind of like bump into each other and like say hi. I think that there may be room, just based on those conversations that we've had in that group, which involves a lot of different people of a lot of different ages, to maybe entice people to embrace this increased density in this region in particular, in this city in particular, just because of some of the really big mistakes that have been made that have left things really unbalanced and unstable for people. All right. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? Alan, do you have any additional comments?
I was just going to say that Becky had mentioned the comprehensive plan update for 2023, and will be, part of the work that we're doing with Rethink Zoning is going to be setting up our code to be prepared for land use changes that we'll make in 2023. And part of that process will also involve taking a look around the future light rail stations. We won't know for sure in 2023 when we adopt the updated comprehensive plan where all of the light rail stations will be located, but we're going to be working, starting this year, or, excuse me, 2020, with Sound Transit and some consultant team that they'll be bringing onboard and looking at that question. They'll be working with Linwood and Snohomish County in Everett as they look at the next extension between Linwood and Everett. And in the future, we'll bring you some, probably some presentations about that process. But all of this is kind of going to, I won't say coming together, but we're going to be looking at a lot of issues that relate to the housing issues that you talked about tonight, transportation issues, and suggesting a lot of land use changes. We're going to be looking at housing types in the Rethink Zoning process. You've heard a little bit about that previously. We'll continue that this coming year. And so some of those potential code changes could address the opportunities for more housing supply and affordability in some of the parts of the city. And then I just wanted to mention that with the comp plan update, we're going to be doing a lot of work in the next three years to probably look at not only the light rail station areas, but perhaps some other parts of the city that we could look at different housing strategies to address the affordability issues. I'll leave it at that, because we'll be bringing a lot more of that back to you in the coming year.
Thank you. Any questions for Alan?
I guess a long line of a question. You know, in seeing the proposals today, I'm still not sure how Everett has stacked up over the last several years relative to other cities within the county and other cities that ring our county. And so I think it would be good, at least to inform my perspective, to understand kind of the growth trends in other cities and the housing types of those growth trends in other cities, as opposed to aggregated county data, because there could be a story there that would be helpful to us in thinking about how we are looking at future land use.
No, that's a great point. And in the past, and even recently, I've heard the city council bring up the point of what Everett is doing in comparison to other cities within Snohomish County, or whatever it has done in the past, and what other cities either are doing or not. Some cities are doing a lot proactively to address the housing challenges, others not as much. And so there's always been this fair share kind of policy debate. And Commissioner Zelinski spent a good part of his planning career at Snohomish County, trying to wrangle between different cities and jurisdictions about how we create kind of a fair share strategy throughout the entire county. And it was something that almost killed Snohomish County tomorrow, nearly fell apart over a policy debate a number of years ago with just that strategy that a lot of communities at that time felt that there was nothing that they really could do more proactively to accommodate different housing types or population growth, even though other cities had done a lot more, like Everett. Linwood's been doing quite a bit, and they're actually seeing tremendous interest in redevelopment around the coming light rail stations. Mount Lake Terrace has done a lot of planning, and they are seeing that kind of demand actually exceeding their forecast just before the light rail's even here. It's going to be four years, and they're already seeing development permits to build the housing that will benefit from the proximity to light rail. Linwood's already seeing that as well. But now, that fair share issue is definitely something that is going to be probably part of the countywide planning policy updates in the next couple of years.
I think that, I mean, that was part of my comment. The equitable allocation of affordable housing projects is probably of interest to this commission. But I also think that the economic development strategies that grow the overall pie of housing options is also of interest, I think, to this commission. Because when we look at where growth has occurred in other areas of county, not just on the affordability side, but on the market rate side, I'm curious to know what's driving that and what those influences are.
Right. And we can have more discussion about that. We can, I mean, that all be part of the comprehensive plan update between now and 2023. Economic development element and economic development strategy certainly is a part of growing your housing strategy as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one comment. I wanted to thank you three for the tremendous amount of work and effort, not just, not just in these presentations, but, I mean, what they really represent for our city and our community. When I was reading through our packet of information to prepare for tonight, though, one concern I had just kept nagging at me. We've been having these concurrent conversations as a commission and as a city about sustainability and also about our housing crisis. And unfortunately, the more affordable a project is, the less environmental it tends to be. The most affordable building materials tend to be the most toxic in terms of emissions, in terms of how they're resourced and manufactured. I think that our conversation about housing also needs to include a substantial amount of conversation about the environmental impact. I think as we try and lower the threshold to making these projects possible, we cannot do it at the expense of our environmental mission. I don't want to ever see that being undermined for the sake of more cheaper accessible housing. I know that that is no one's intent, but I would like to see more and stronger language regarding our environmental strategy, just in this conversation about housing, maybe not even necessarily in terms of who we're rewarding with tax incentives or financial assistance, but I think just in terms of any project we look at, we should be, that should be one of our benchmarks, that they're meeting these goals, and then they continue on. But just because I didn't see that in this packet doesn't mean that that's not something that's already in the forefront of your mind, but I just needed to say it out loud.
Maybe I could just make a quick comment about Claire's Place and Hope Works Station. Both of those projects received a grant from the state. They are ultra-high energy efficiently built with the right materials on it. So I think, you know, that's a really good comment, and not every project or material that we're using is non-environmental friendly, but I wanted to mention those two projects.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the last stat I saw was 40% of our greenhouse emissions are still in the building and construction trade. And as an architect, that hurts. I do try my best to reduce impact where possible, but it's not easy when, you know, money is the only green that most people really want to talk about.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment and a thank you. You know, being associated with the Hope Works project, like, there's the generosity of, you know, municipalities and the community that helped get it done. That building is, you know, going to be competing for like the Living Futures certification, and it will be competing on like four different pedals to get that certification. And maybe if the stats are correct, if we do receive that certification, we'll be the first affordable housing project in the world to receive the first certification. It's not insurmountable. It's a challenge, though. And, but, you know, the, as much as it was difficult learning how to do it, we proved it can be done. So there is a bit of hope. There is a ray of light at the end of that tunnel. And so, yeah, and so I just want, again, but that was because of the generosity, the kindness, and the leadership from the city and the county and the state, you know, making sure they're making that investment.
All right. Okay, this is.
Yeah, okay, so doesn't want to speak again?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. So we did receive a request for a comment. It's Ismail Mohammed. Did I pronounce that correct? My apologies if I didn't.
No.
Please state your name and your address.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate. And after, well, I've attended some of the metro Everett meetings, and hearing today seems like, you know, how we would be able to sleep tonight when we have a crisis coming up. There are two issues I think we are handling here, is affordable and housing. You know, affordable means, of course, the people who have certain amount of median income. But as we start building housing in Everett, then people going to find it very easy, convenient with the transit, they're going to move north. So our housing crisis will still remain the same, because for the people in Everett, I think, we need to, as Mr. Adams said, it's an economic issue, too, that we need to raise our earning income grading also with the, with the everything else that we are providing to our constituents. I think zoning is one part of it, labor, availability of labor is. I am personally a business owner in city of Everett. Sorry, I should have introduced myself. I'm a business owner in Everett for the last 25 years. And we looked into the development or building some units in Everett. Eventually, I came down to finally that, you know, even if I build here in Everett, the return as, the rent are much less compared to south, you know? I can build in Linwood and make the more money. So I started looking at some, I have an example that I am working on, maybe if council likes to look at it maybe some other time, that I look at a single-family home, and it's in zoning R4. And I thought, you know, I would demolish this house, which is a single-family, and I will build four units on it. It's within the zoning and everything, but the cost didn't allow me to do that because it was not feasible. It wasn't penciling out. So then I looked into further, like, how can I make it viable? So I've come to a, I've narrowed it down with the help of some consultants, that I can leave that single-family home there, and I can build a two, like a duplex. And Minneapolis, or the example that you mentioned, to allowing that triple, triplex would actually help that homeowner to keep his home, utilize the space that he has in the rear of the lot, and the land cost would go down tremendously, and it will be a viable project then. So I'm actually working on that. Now, R4 is one zoning, R3 is one zoning, but we can, if we go down further to R2, actually, there are, there is a tremendous amount of land out there, which 1,000 square foot home sitting on 6,000 or 8,000 or 10,000 square foot lot, people are used to of it. But if a homeowner, he doesn't want to leave his space because he has no place to go to, and if he goes there, it's more, much more expensive. So I can live in my home, which is 1,000, 1,500 square feet home, but I can utilize the land which is available, which is free to me, and which is going to take away the cost of building everything. That aspect would actually tremendously change the whole, can tremendously change the whole fabric of our community, maybe, in the years to come. And we are looking at 50,000. Well, dual income is the purpose. We're going to have to have dual income. We cannot base our data on single income, because it will not fall. I have noticed, I've bought few properties, actually, based on that model that I've looked at, and I bought few properties in Everett at a reasonable price with the single-family homes on it. And I am going to present this to the planning in the next few weeks. Actually, my application is already in the plans for a pre-app meeting next week. So I would like to see how that goes. If that goes, then all the rest of the, that model can be adopted by anybody. I'm not saying it's me, you know? If it's, it goes through, it's going to be a major change, I think. We can utilize that. And when we go to R2, it's going to be further enhance our capacity. Yes, economic issues are also. We need to have better jobs and better income, because when I have a rental property in Everett, I am having applicants from Seattle willing to drive up to Everett and go back and take that commute. And once the transit is going to, light rail is going to come up, so we will have people coming from south, because they find their home for 1,700 here, where they can not find anything for 1,700 in Seattle. So our issues, our problem for our own community will stay there, because we will have a lot of other cities' residents moving up here. I guess that's all I have to say, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both speakers tonight, I want to thank you. I think you brought up some really good points. I'd encourage you to stay involved with the Rethink Zoning project, and please watch it and bring your comments. So thank you. Any other questions? Then I think we're adjourned. Then I think we're adjourned.